Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming this morning. It's a gorgeous morning outside. It's a good time to live in South Dakota. The floodwaters are receding, so we have lots to celebrate. Before we start today, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Heiburger. Last week, we didn't have a meeting. There was a meeting of the Association of County Commissioners, and she was elected president. So congratulations. Thank you very much for your service.[91.61][91.61][applause] All right, as we get started, I just want to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down on the end, next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Craig is here if you need a listening device. So go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get into regular business, we have some awards to hand out that were presented last week at the meeting that I talked about of the State Association of County Commissioners. So I'm going to go down and present these awards. If you are here, please come forward and receive your award. So our first award is last week, the Association of Counties recognized Minnehaha County employees and the Safety Committee for and awarded us the Gold Level Loss Control Safety Achievement Award on behalf of the South Dakota Workers' Compensation Fund and the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance in recognition of outstanding loss control ratios in workers' comp and other liability plans. So Doug Blomker, if you'll come forward, you're the Chair of the Safety Committee. You get to receive this award.
That's not a work-related injury.[193.51][193.51][laughter][196.12][196.12][applause]
All right, the next awards are really pretty fantastic awards for service. One thing about the county is that we have a lot of great loyal employees that have been here and contributed for a long time. And so at the meeting last week, there was some recognition of these outstanding service awards. So the first one is for Lisa Behrens from the Juvenile Detention Center. And she's off today. So Lisa has been with the county for 35 years. I think that's remarkable. That's very hard work that's done there, out there at juvenile detention. Next award goes to Richard Hinsman, and he is being recognized for 25 years of service. So thank you so much.[243.54][243.54][applause] Okay, next we go to the Register of Deeds, and Susan Hopkins is being recognized for 40 years of dedication. She clearly started when she was 10.[260.02][260.02][laughter] Thank you so much. And also in the Register of Deeds, we have Robin Ketchum, who's celebrating 25 years And finally, we have somebody with the Highway Department, and I don't think he was able to make it today. John Crittenden is being recognized for 25 years of service. So thank you to all of you.[292.02][292.02][applause] Okay, so that takes us to routine business. I would accept a motion to amend our agenda. Commissioner Heiburger?
Chairman, can I make a motion to delete item number six from the agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, oh, so I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from September 10, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,111,256.86.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Comment that we had no meeting last week, so this is the bills for two weeks.
Yep, they tend to add up. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are reports, number of reports there. I'd come in for your review. We have Register of Deeds official statement of revenue collected for August 2019, the Minnehaha County Coroner Report for July 2019, the Auditor's Office, if you want to come forward. Vicki, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the Auditor's Office, here with the August financial results, starting out with the general fund cash balance, sitting at $9.8 million, up a little over $800,000 from last year. Again, we continue that spend down until we get our second half property taxes coming up in October here. The Highway Fund cash balance, sitting at $9.752 million, down about $1.6 million from last year. But if you recall, they did budget at a $3.75 cash applied, so that's kind of a planned spend down due to projects this year. Total expenditures, we're looking at $38,177,000, sitting at 65.6% of budget, so just a little higher than last year. Personnel expenses at $26,572,000, just slightly over last year budget-wise, at 67.4%. And then other expenses at $11,605,000, again, just a little bit over budget at 61.7% over last year. And then revenues, total revenue at $32,661,057.5% of budget, just slightly under last year. Our year-to-date taxes are at $23,484,054.54% of budget. Again, we've talked before, we're continuing to close that gap due to the early payments in 2018 that happened in January, so I would expect that to catch up here in October as well. And then our other revenues at $9,176,000. So those are ahead of last year at 67.2% of budget, so that's keeping our total revenue even with last year, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Vicki this morning? All right, thank you very much. All right. So that takes us to personnel actions. Consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm here to make a special personnel action request to approve a new grant-funded position of corporal at a pay grade 17 for the jail and to approve immediate recruitment. Michelle Boyd and Erin Sersk are here to further explain the position, if you would like some background on this and the grant funding.
It'd be great if you'd go ahead and just give a little background. Thank you.
Good morning. Michelle Boyd with the Sheriff's Office. We're in front of you today because we have the opportunity to accept some grant funding from the MacArthur Foundation, if you so approve. Our intention would be to use this funding for a community programs coordinator within the jail. As you know, about 85% of our inmates in jail are unsentenced pretrial inmates, and so we're trying to work very closely with the courts and with your pretrial staff to try to better serve these inmates and to have them out in the community supervised rather than being in the jail at almost $90 a day. And so this position would provide that day-to-day coordination with the jail community-based programs that we currently have, such as electronic monitoring, 24/7, walk-in warrant program, all of those. And then some of the new things that we're doing, we're doing an in-custody review team with the courts. We want to try to do some things with pretrial to get them connected right away when they walk out the door of the jail after court, to get into pretrial so that they don't leave the jail and then never really get signed up for pretrial. And then we want to be able to facilitate that process and join efforts with alliance that's already in place to manage and assure a smooth release from jail to other services in the community. So if you would entertain that, the MacArthur Foundation has $89,000 for this position that would begin immediately, it goes through October of 2020, and then the intention would be to extend any unused funds through the end of 2020. And Erin Sersk is here to speak to the funds of MacArthur, if you have any further questions on that as well.
Commissioner Karski.
So we're getting the money to pay for it through next year, basically. Is there a requirement to keep the position beyond that? I mean, I understand that staff in the jail is growing, or, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Are we required for any extended period to keep this position as it is funded?
No, there's no requirement under the grant to keep it for a certain number of years. If it is as beneficial as we think it will be and hope it will be, we will either try to continue those grant funds under the MacArthur Grant to show that we're helping with that pretrial mission that they have. If not, it is also an area, as you know, we're building the addition on the jail. We have a programs area that our intention is to do a lot of this stuff in that area, and we know there's a need right now. We're using some of the intake supervisors to help do this. Our jail lieutenant is managing some of this. I'm helping with some of this, so it's kind of all of these people trying to coordinate it in addition to what they're already doing. So I would look to it being an ask later if we are able to show that it's beneficial to the operations.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I was just going to say, I'm assuming that there'll be some type of data collected as we work with people, because if you keep one person, or 365 days is about $33,000, so you would pay for a staff person by keeping two people, or two, keeping the jail free of decreasing the population by two over a year, you'd pay for that position. So hopefully, we'll have enough data to support the kind of work that they'll be doing this next year.
Right, and it'll certainly be a joint effort. So we're working very closely with the courts and the pretrial and, you know, we'll bring alliance in. We haven't obviously got all of that started yet, but it's going to be a joint effort. Nothing will necessarily be just on this position, obviously, because we need everybody's help. But I'm pretty excited about some of the things that we've talked about and trying to work on to move people out of the jail and do something a little bit different in our community than we're doing right now, so.
I think, I had an opportunity to visit with Michelle and some of the sheriff's staff, and, I mean, this was part of, this position was part of the long-term plan, and there was some hope to add this position in 2020 or later. Is that correct?
Early 2021, yep.
Yeah, and so, I mean, this grant funding is really allowing us to accelerate that opportunity. I mean, I think it's, it's a wonderful opportunity for us, really shows commitment that we have to all of these programs that you've talked about, that, you know, we talked, when we started talking about the jail addition, that this was a multifaceted problem, that we needed to be able to house the people that we had, that we were responsible for. And you've seen issues in other counties that, one of the things that I really noted at the county commission, statewide county commission meeting last week, is that every commissioner I talked about was really struggling with their budget because they were shipping people under their custody to Nebraska and Iowa and all over. So we've been able to manage our budget responsibly, but at the same time, we've invested resources in trying to keep that population down. We're not in the business of trying to fill that jail. We're in the business of trying to keep people, keep them productive, keep their lives and their families intact, and I think this is a great opportunity to do that. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Who's to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And then approval to begin immediate recruitment.
Motion to approve immediate recruitment.
Okay, motion and a second for immediate recruitment. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so item six was removed, so that takes us to item seven, notices and requests. I'll just note that there was a notice from the South Dakota Health Department of Disinterment permit issued for the remains of Nicholas Zimmer. No action needed on that. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. And then that takes us to item nine, which is a petition for compromise of lien. I believe there's someone here from the Auditor's Office to visit about this. This is a little unusual for us, and so it'd be helpful if you could just give a little background on this.
Yes, good morning. Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And what has happened here was, we had a person who owed, I think it was around $130, you know, as a lien, and she passed on. They were closing out the estate, and they've offered to pay, I think, 78% of this here, of this lien, and so we brought it forward to get the rest of it compromised.
Are there any questions for Auditor Litz? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Public.
I think we should just forgive this lien. I looked at this, the party passed away on January 3. The lien was posted in March, and $100. She was, you know, not too old, but we don't know what criminal charge was involved. It could have involved, you know, dementia or anything, so I think $100 bucks, let's let it go. That's my motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, that takes us to public comment. This is the opportunity for anyone here who would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda to come forward. Good morning.
Hi, Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. I was asked today to just come and give you guys an update on what had occurred on September 11, which will be a date that Sioux Falls won't forget for a while. Three tornadoes struck down in the city of Sioux Falls. Luckily, nobody, no life, no loss of life. Emergency Operations Center was opened, which was staffed by many of the Sioux Falls department heads, along with the law enforcement and myself, and also the state department of, was here, was there to assist us also. And what we did is we got resources for the flooding that was impending for Dell Rapids and Skunk Creek and Brandon. The city of Sioux Falls was kind enough to release all their sandbags that they had filled earlier this year that they hadn't destroyed yet. So the ability to get those sandbags to Renner and Dell Rapids and Brandon really helped out. And I want to give a thanks to County Highway. They used their trucks and their trailers to haul those sandbags to Renner due to the quickness that this was going to come down. You know, the previous flood in March, we were able to prepare because we knew this was coming for a long amount of time. Well, this one, it just dumped a bunch of rain to the north of us, and we knew we had about a 12 to 24-hour period to prepare. So without those sandbags pre-filled, we probably would have had a lot more damage in the Renner area and maybe Dell Rapids. Now, this was a record that we set in Dell Rapids and a record in Renner. Luckily, again, no loss of life due to the flooding. We did see a lot of water rescues or water recoveries, I guess we'd say, where we had to go to some houses and pull some people out. They weren't in peril or anything like that, but we organized that. And with the city of Sioux Falls, their fire rescue and then our emergency management water rescue team, along with the Renner Fire Department, and I believe Dell Rapids had one also, the fire department was able to handle that. So now we are in recovery mode again, so we need to start the preliminary damage assessments. I was just up in Renner yesterday as the water went down. Most of the roads that they fixed are all destroyed again, and I met with a township member yesterday who stopped into the office to get some information from me about, you know, how we're going to proceed. What I've done is I've asked Team Rubicon, who was here for both incidents, and I found that they do the preliminary damage assessments for the townships if we request them. So I have requested them. My intent now is to get with the townships to see if that's what they want and see if there's a need there and which townships are going to be applying for damage. And then we'll go to that next step and do the disaster declaration, which will go to the state. I believe Lincoln County is doing theirs today. I just don't have the information due to the high water that's still flowing through and possible damage to bridges. As you know, 60th Street North, the bridge was damaged there, and they'll have to fix that also. So Sioux Falls has damage to the tornado, some damage to flooding, but the county, obviously, there's going to be some road damages, the townships that were previously damaged also. Any questions?
Questions?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
First, this guy came on, and it's been one disaster or another, so really...[1335.13][1335.13][laughter]
I'm going to rephrase how you said that.[1339.22][1339.22][laughter]
But he's handled it great, and, you know, but it is a baptism of flood in this case. I wonder if we should look at, you know, we have the option of putting a wheel tax on vehicles with more than four tires. I wonder if we couldn't consider doing that to raise some money to cover the township costs that we've incurred here. Some have plenty of money, some do not, and I think we need to see what they, what their needs are. Our own highway department, I was on Highway 110 last weekend, and it was eroded on the south side where the water had been going over the hardtop. And anyway, I think there's a lot of costs out there that haven't even been assessed yet, and we need, may need to help our friends in the townships raise some additional money.
Okay, I can think about that and look at that a little bit more. Any other comments? Well, I too would just like to thank you and Doug and just the whole team that worked tirelessly on these events. It's been a very difficult time for a lot of people, and there's a lot of work to do still. I really appreciate leadership that the city of Sioux Falls put in place for the tornado response, but we do have a lot of damage out in the county from these floods that are really unprecedented for this time of year. And so I really appreciate your leadership in leading that. And then, so folks that do have damages that they want to report, you still recommending folks call 211 to do that?
Yes, yep. Call 211 if you live in the county and have damage. I just want to make sure that people are aware that there may not be funding for them. I announced this the last time, and I had people calling and saying, you know, they wanted to check, and it doesn't quite work that way. But it doesn't hurt to call in, at least to give us those statistics to see where we're at and what needs to be protected, because we have to start preparing early for the next round, I'm guessing, in the spring. With all this saturation that we have, it's not going to go away, and if we're, if they're predicting the amount of snowfall that they are, I mean, it's, they're saying that there's going to be some considerable snowfall, so we're going to have these issues in the spring again. So we just need to have that information to know where to protect and what to fight and what not to fight.
Commissioner Heiburger?
So you talked about preparing for next spring, and it was very beneficial that they had sandbags on hand. Do you think in the wintertime that we might be filling sandbags and stocking some because we're probably going to need them, or are we going to do it on emergency? You know, we got, we got a week to do this, and so...
That would be the goal. That would be the goal, other than the problems you run into if you, you can't fill them during the winter because the sand has froze, and it really doesn't do much good, so you have to really time it unless they're pre-filled. And, you know, a lot of these sandbags now that are being left outside, even if they're on pallets, they're going to freeze over the winter, and they may be worthless by the spring. So it's, we're going to have to start over again with the sandbags, but we have stockpiled sandbags. We have, I'm guessing around 80,000 here, and obviously Sioux Falls has numerous, too. I'm not sure of the amount, but I'm guessing it's close to that, so.
Anything else? And I know there's a lot of damage in Dell Rapids and Renner. Brandon had a lot of damage that they didn't really see in the spring because they didn't get the same amount of flooding in the spring, so a lot of work to be done out there, and we appreciate your leadership in that area.
In the city of Dell Rapids, you may want to check with them in the future. They're really working hard to get some of these homes purchased or adjusted so they don't have to deal with this anymore, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here this morning who'd like to speak during public comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us to regular business. First item of regular business is a briefing and closing comments by the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit on the fiscal year 2018 Minnehaha County Audit. Jeff Schaefer, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jeff Schaefer. I'm with Department of Legislative Audit, and I'm here to report on the fiscal compliance audit for 2018. As of right now, it's in its final form, and it's, just as a closing conference is always required here. I'd like to draw your attention to the management that provided everyone, and those are, those will outline the items that I'd like to discuss with you, particularly the second page. And towards the bottom of the second page, there's one item. We'll start with that one. And it said deficiencies noted in internal control that did not rise to a level of being a material weakness or significant deficiency, yet important enough to merit the attention of those in charge of governance. And that was internal accounting controls over financial reporting were lacking in some areas resulting in adjustments to the financial statements, excuse me, to the annual financial report and an increase in the audit time related to those issues. We recommend that the county strengthen control controls over financial reporting. And at any point in time, if you have any questions on anything that I would talk about here, please feel free. With that, I'll move to the item just above that, and that is a significant deficiencies noted in internal accounting controls that are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which are included in the schedule of current audit findings in the audit report. I'm going to explain a little bit. We have three different levels that we, of deficiencies. We have control deficiency, which is your ordinary finding, could be just all common, just immaterial type of items. A significant deficiency is items that we have a written comment for, yet it has been mitigated in some fashion by other controls. A material weakness is way on the right end side in saying that even, that this condition exists that the internal control structure of the county, or the entity, I should say, is such that it would not have detected it on its own. This deficiency that we're reporting on is a significant deficiency in the middle because there were other composite controls with segregation duties throughout the offices that mitigated the financial impact or any potential financial impact to that level. So, so I would like to, if any questions on anything that I've said so far? Okay. With that, I would like to outline that, it says, "The county's internal controls over cash management and investment reconciliation and reporting process were inadequate, resulting in diminished assurance that the county's financial transactions were properly recorded and its assets were properly or adequately safeguarded." This is further discussed in finding 2018-001. And I believe you were all supplied with a copy of that comment, and I'd like to read through some of the important parts of this, and at any point in time, if you have any questions. "The county's internal control over cash and its investment reconciliation and reporting process were inadequate, resulting in diminished assurance that the county's financial transactions were properly recorded and its assets were adequately safeguarded." Skip down to the middle of the pages. "We noted the following deficiencies in internal controls in the cash investment reconciliation and reporting process." in the cash investment reconciliation and reporting process. The county had not presented a monthly verification of the treasurer's accounts to the Board of County Commissioners since June of 2018. STCL 710-3 requires a monthly verification of the treasurer's accounts to be reported to the Board of County Commissioners at each regular meeting. This monthly verification serves as a check and balance for the treasurer's office by verifying all cash items and bank accounts in the possession of the treasurer's office." The second one is the county had not performed a complete reconciliation of recorded cash and investments to the financial institution balances since July of 2018. Such reconciliation is necessary to detect errors in the county's accounting system or errors made by the financial institutions. We recommend the county prepare and present a monthly verification of the treasurer's accounts to the Board of County Commissioners as required by STCL 710-3. We recommend the county perform a reconciliation of recorded cash investments to the financial institutions balances on a monthly basis. Our audit comment was cut off, our audit end date is 12/31/18. And since that point in time, there has been significant progress done with the reconciliation progress, reconciliation process. And so, I would like to give them credit for that. But at 12/31, there wasn't, there was a six-month gap in that. This is a written comment that'll be included in the report as a significant deficiency and this comment would require a response from the county to be included in the report. Any questions at all on...
Commissioner Benega?
Well, I don't really have any questions. I guess I have a comment at this point. Obviously, this is disappointing to us to have that concern and a significant deficiency is not acceptable. Not only does it affect the county, but it affects the school system and the city and the cash flow related issues. So, I'm disappointed in that. I think that's, this is the second time we've had conversations about this particular issue along with some tax deed issues. I was hoping that we would have the director here today, so to speak, and I think that's where we need to start this conversation. Some of the concerns were about changing over to the new computer system. Had nothing to do with these problems, as I understand.
There were some semantics because all the stuff is provided by that, but a reconciliation process is done manually or often, it's not particularly related to the system. A reconciliation is identifying your in-transit items and so on and so forth. So, that would be in effect to any type of system.
Right. The other thing is, is when I, over the last year, when we were going through trainings and we got 20-plus departments and other outside agencies and some other cash accounts, I don't believe that we had as many people attending those trainings that should have been attending those trainings to make the transfer go comfortably smooth, so to speak. So, when we get to that point, I'd like to know the cause of why that happened. I know that this is going to probably cost us monies, so to speak, not only from an internal practice, but more importantly, from the number of hours you had to do an audit and frankly, the cost of doing the audit. So, the whole process in that particular area is not comfortable or frankly, acceptable because if it happens a second year in a row, that will have major impact on our future bonding potential.
If it isn't corrected before the next one, it becomes a material weakness.
Exactly.
One thing I would like to add is that I did a complete reconciliation of cash to, at 12/31/18, and my reconciled balance was $2,868 more than what the county showed. So, which, that is a good thing.
It is.
But I just make note of that, so.
As one of my bosses told me when I got out of college, he said all bottlenecks have the top of the bottle at the very top. So, I think we need to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And if it does, then we're going to have to be extremely diligent in making sure that in this process that we get constant changes and upgrades to make sure that that can't happen. I guess I, just the bottom line for me is I'm extremely disappointed in the fact that we're seeing this for the first time. Not the first time from you, but the first time that I can remember we've had something significant like this that hasn't...
That's true.
Been changed.
Commissioner Karski?
Okay. Commissioner Benega asked about how our system, UNIS, impacts our operation. How does it impact your ability to audit? Does it have an effect on...
As far as the UNIS system itself?
Yeah.
I'm a big fan that I thought that the UNIS system itself was a, from what you went, from the ASN system, I particularly liked the upgrade and the abilities and the stuff. It's like with anything, you know, you're not driving a 35-year-old car anymore. I mean, these, there's a lot of changes and it was a little of adjustment as far as what we were asking for in the past to how we get that information now. And that has been, that has been, it was, there was a little bit of lag in there, you know, as far as what we were talking about before to getting that stuff this time. But I think that that'll work out as just a newness of the system. But I think the system was needed for this county personally.
Not to put words in your mouth, but what I'm hearing is any impact is probably a positive impact going to UNIS, is that what?
I do think that, yes.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Barth?
Jeff, thank you for giving us this report. So, if I heard you right, there's no indication that money is missing and in fact, it seems like we're long?
Well, that's correct. And what I think it is, is timing of reconciliation of those reconciling items, in-transit items and stuff like that. I think this might have been interest on CDs or it could have been, it was long. I will kind of reiterate the segregation of duties that you have between offices. You know, you have one person that does deposit. This person does the reconciliation process. Vendors are put in by this person. Bills are paid and over here about this. So, you have so much segregation duties that actually mitigates the possibility of money being taken. You'd have to have collusion on a grand scale.
Well, if I may, being married to a former bank teller, being long at the end of the day was as bad as being short.
Well...
Of course, there's tens of hundreds of millions of dollars passing through here. So, my other question is, what are we as a county commission required to do at this point?
Well, I've given the recommendations. I think you have to make, be due diligent in fact, getting these things taken care of, you know, that the reconciliation process happens. Do what it requires to get that done and...
But Jeff, we don't run those departments.
I'm aware of that. I don't know what else to do, what else to say, but I think that someone has to be, someone has to be responsible for that. And I think that it's heading that way, but it's not fully completed as of now.
Commissioner Benega?
I'll just make one comment. I agree with what Jeff said. I think the thing that, you know, we only have control, quote, of the budget, but I think we're just going to have to require those reports be presented on a monthly basis. And if we don't see those, there's going to be a problem.
Commissioner Heiberg?
I will just comment that those reports did used to come to us on a monthly basis and then they just disappeared. And these are reports that we receive, not that we make. We're not responsible for that part of the budgeting, so.
Just for purposes of the folks that are viewing this, I think sometimes there's a lot of misunderstanding about the county and how things operate. And I would admit before I was elected, I was guilty of a lot of that misunderstanding. But, you know, there are a number of elected officials that are independently elected and that includes the treasurer's office. And so, the county commission doesn't really have control, direct control over that office because it's run by an independently elected official who is responsible and has authority to do all the hiring and management of that office. So, just so that there's no confusion about what we're talking about because I think it seems very confusing for county commissioners to say we have no control of something when it's county and your audit report talks about the county has responsibility for these things. And so, it's just a way that the system is set up by statute that sometimes is confusing and makes things a little more challenging to work through. And I would note that this was an issue that we were aware of and that we have been working with that office and have reached out a couple of times in writing explaining these statutory obligations. Have had that elected official come before the commission to try to give us some understanding of what's going on here. I'm curious and, you know, because here it is, you know, almost October and you're here giving us your final report. So, last year was almost the same timing and these reports stopped sometime in the summer of 2018. I was curious if you had any opportunity to visit with the treasurer's office last year during your audit about the need to get these reports done?
I did. I knew that this was, there was a lapse in this going on when we left at the end of last year's audit, but our audit cutoff was at 12/31/17. It was, and at that point in time, they had reconciled through April. And I had mentioned that, that it doesn't have to be done in any fashion. You have to just provide us with a reconciliation or something that shows this, that not doing that will be a problem. And I was, I told them that the last day I was here. And, but I do, I would mention one thing that has been my observation that some things happened, you know, like where you had change in personnel and we had this and stuff like that. So, all that just kind of exacerbated the whole effect. You know, you had the one longtime person that had been there forever, she retired. Another new person stepped up and she didn't, wasn't right for the job. And then someone new, and so it's been, it's compounded itself. But nonetheless, it still exists, so.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
You know, this is a very complicated county where, and every county is, where we have, as Commissioner Bender pointed out, kind of a Byzantine process where the independently elected people have jobs that are kind of technical, but we still elect someone's favorite aunt or uncle. And they may not be experts in their field as opposed to, say, a law enforcement officer as sheriff, but you've probably seen this type of issue in other places. And what did the county commissioners in those places do afterwards? Did they just pull up their socks or go home and have a beer or?
I don't know that for sure, but they're all kind of hamstring with the same type of thing you are, the elected officials and stuff like that. We have seen this in other smaller places and when you get a smaller place that has just one or two people there, then of course, it's a material weakness because there isn't the segregation of duties and stuff like that. And then has existed, goes on for some places for two or three audits. And there's really nothing on our part, other than we can just, we just keep bringing it to their attention and do whatever we can do to, if we have to provide assistance, we've done that in the past too, as far as helping them out with the reconciliation process and getting them up to speed on stuff like that. So, we try and do what we can on our part too to alleviate it.
Thank you for pointing out the issues with staff changes. But are there any other large counties, not, you know, one-person operations where this kind of thing has happened?
I'm not aware. And I've been doing this audit here for, well, 30 years and it's not been...
You don't look that old.
I was hesitant to say the 30 years, but it's actually been a couple more than that, so.
Commissioner Karski?
Thank you. You were talking about monthly reports, but there's some daily things that need to be done too. The treasurer's daily balance, that type of thing. Any observations or comments on that?
I have. From what I can see, like the daily, the deposits and stuff there, there's a lot of controls of that. They're being made and appear to be quite accurate. I believe that there is, in the past, a treasurer's daily balance book was required by our office, you know, under the, for, as a required document. And that has not been maintained since July 1st of 18 either.
Okay. What's the risk to the county with not completing those types of things?
Well, like I said in here, you know, there's the comparison of the records of the GL side to the treasurer's side for the total assets and stuff. And they're supposed to, and that's essentially what the auditors account, the treasurer does, is it compares the general ledger side, which is the auditor's side, and the treasurer's side, which is the total cash, and gives you the comparison, you know, any variances that might notice as far as accountability is what it gives you. And there's some, you know, deficiency there, but like I say, we, the controls and stuff are in place that the likelihood of money being missing is remote. But it gives you an uneasy feeling nonetheless.
Other questions?
I'm just curious whether you have any other recommendations that came out of your audit that you think would be helpful to, with respect to this particular issue?
Nothing in respect with this particular issue. I think we've talked about, maybe if we had to provide some assistance and stuff like that to help getting the treasurer's daily balance book up to speed, this type of thing. There, we'll make note though that we had other findings and recommendations that were included, that we included on our master lead schedule that were immaterial in nature. We just discussed them with appropriate official, you know, that would just maybe consider this or just do this, so. And that's about the extent of it.
Okay, well, I know that the treasurer wasn't, isn't here today, wasn't able to be here today apparently. And so, we will invite her to come and give us her update on this issue, hopefully next week. I'm curious whether you had an opportunity to visit with her personally about these findings?
Yes, I did. And I, we read, went through the comment and then I asked that, we made note that a response would be required from the county. And I, and she says, and I was asked if it was from her. I said, "Well, I would think the responsible party, that would be her, but you're basically responding on behalf of the county. And your statement should say, summarize, what am I doing or what are we currently doing that would summarize, that would alleviate this deficiency?" And so, again, I think that'll be as a county's response.
Okay. Further questions? Commissioner Benega?
Jeff, is it possible that we can ask you on a intermittent basis just to stop by and look at that again to see if those corrections are moving in the right direction?
Yeah, we could do that.
I'm guessing you're in the area a lot.
I, yeah, if I'm not here, I'm driving by, so.
Three quarters of your year here, so.
It's a little unusual this year and hopefully it isn't a new thing, but yeah, we've been here a long time, so.
Okay. Further questions?
Well, we do appreciate the work that your office does and I know that you have spent a lot of time on this issue. It's certainly an issue that has been of great concern to us. There's a lot of money that flows through the treasurer's office on an annual basis and, you know, I think we all owe it to the taxpayers to make sure that it's on a daily basis, on a monthly basis, it's reconciled just the same as we all have to do with our own personal finances and household finances. So, thank you for being here this morning.
Yep, you're welcome. Thanks much.
Commissioner Barth?
I just want to say I think that the state's attorney needs to consult the treasurer and the commission as far as the correct response in all of this. And I don't want us to fumble it on either end.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us to item 11, which is to consider a motion to adopt the final 2020 budget for Minnehaha County. Carol Muller?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is the final adoption of the 2020 budget for Minnehaha County. A few stats that I'll just pull out for you. The total budget is $92,66,110. There are two numbers that you focused on primarily in the big picture and I just want to share that for the public. Cash applied for the general fund is $4.2 million, which is a slight decrease from last year. 1.75 of the available opt-out will be accessed from the $6.5 million opt-out that you authorized in July of 2019. When you pass the provisional budget, you're anticipating that to be 1.9 and you were able to drop that, which I know has been a priority for all of you. When we talk about the revenue, the revenue increase was 2.4% on the CPI. That brings in an additional $800,000 for the county. Growth was 2.86%, which brings in additional $958,000. The other thing that's different this year is we are back in the jail revenue business and we appreciate the sheriff's office and the jail for that. You know that we've already opened up the fifth floor and we have a contract with Lincoln County that will start, I believe, the 1st of October and where we guarantee them 45 beds a day. So, we appreciate the work that they've done and it shows to help pay additional expenses that are over there also. Health insurance premiums, as many people in the private sector experience, ours are up 15% for next year. And the last thing I will just share is that we have 20 additional positions. We're approved for 2020. Every single one of them is related back to public safety.
Anybody have any comments or questions? One thing that I would note about all those positions is that very few of them are for the entire year. We kind of did our best to...
the entire year. We kind of did our best to piece together a budget that, that we could live with, that allowed people to kind of plug the holes in the dike a little bit for at least part of the year. But that full obligation will come to roost in the following year's budget. So, it will be another difficult budget year next year. Any other comments?
Motion to approve the budget?
Motion and a second. Any further comments? I think before we vote, I just would like to thank again, everybody who worked so hard on this budget. You know, it's been a difficult year. Nobody likes to vote for an opt-out and, but it's been a great team effort. We've had great support from the auditor's office and the commissioner's office and all the department heads in really sharpening their pencils and putting together a budget that we could, can make work. So, I just want to thank everybody for that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so that takes us to item 12, which is to consider a motion to approve a consume and blend alcohol beverage license for an event on October 19th, 2019 at the Isaac Walton League. Olivia?
Thank you. Josh Boosie has submitted an application to supply liquor for his wedding on October 19th. Sorry, I had to double check. On October 19th at the Isaac Walton League. So, he would be allowed to provide it, but not sell it if you approve this license.
Any questions for Olivia?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item 13 is to consider a similar motion, a motion to approve a consume and blend alcohol beverage license for an event on October 26th at the Isaac Walton League. Olivia?
Yes, thank you. This is another application. This event will take place on October 26th at the Isaac Walton League and it was submitted by Joseph Oyody. I'm sorry if I said that wrong. And again, this would only allow them to supply liquor. It will not allow them to sell.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, a question for Olivia. Do you have to be over 21 to ask for that license?
I would think yes, because I don't know how you're going to buy the liquor for your event otherwise.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
Okay, so that takes us to item 14, which is to consider a resolution in support of the Deadwood Grant Fund application by the Multicultural Association. Kristine Nicolaiuson, good morning.
Nicolaiuson, we are trying to submit, well, this, at this point, Deadwood Grant to fix the sprinkler system in the building. So, then we can update the sound system. And we're not asking for any county money. We're just trying to get some grant money to fix both parts.
Madam Chair, I favor grant money. I make a motion to approve this grant application.
Second.
Or support this grant application.
So, you have a motion and a second. Commissioner Heiburger?
I have a question. I don't see it in what I have in front of me, but I think, I thought I saw a dollar amount for the fixing of the, of the, I think I read it yesterday, the dollar amount that it was. And my question was, is that, I think it was $11,000 or something like that. Would it seriously cover the expenses of fixing the sprinkler system and the, and the sound system, or is that just?
Sprinkler system.
That would fix the sprinkler system part of it?
Yep.
And, and the grant would cover entirely that or a portion of that? I apologize.
The grant is written to cover that part and then it's a matching grant. So, we're trying to get the sound system off another grant or two.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Much.
Okay, so that takes us to item 15, which is to consider a motion to authorize the public defender's office to renew a three-year contract with West Publishing Corporation for West Law Legal Software. Tracy Smith, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Smith, Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office. As indicated, we're just requesting authority to renew a three-year contract with West Law. Unlike what most people believe with regard to research services, it's not like in the, what's pictured on TV with the law books behind the prestigious lawyers. Most decisions with lawyers are made daily and issues, opinions are issued all the time. So, there's no time for them to be published in books anymore. So, we rely on legal research services. So, we met with both West Law and the other big company that provides legal services for lawyers, Lexis. After reviewing both companies, we decided to continue with West Law and renegotiate a plan that would reduce what we're currently paying pretty significantly and also allow us to cancel a service called CLEAR, which allows us to have access to public record searches. So, we're just asking for approval to re-sign a contract for the next three years with West Law.
Mr. Heiburger?
Just one question. When you cancel your contract with CLEAR, there's no penalties for canceling?
No, because we were coming up on the end of our contract with them as of October as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Karski?
Just a comment. I asked Tracy how this came about, that we're able to save so much. It was just good old-fashioned negotiation and working with them. So, thank you for your work. It saved us $12,000. Good job.
Thank you.
I would second that. I think it's a thousand dollars a month. It was a pretty substantial deal that you struck. And so, I really appreciate you looking out for all the pennies for the county.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That takes us to item 16, which is to consider a motion to authorize the state's attorney's office to sign an amendment to the agreement with Thomson Reuters dated 4/23/19 for West Law Legal Research. Drew, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. The state's attorney is requesting authorization to amend our contract. We have reached our user agreement allotment of attorneys, so we need to update that to have access for additional attorneys.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this morning. That takes us to item 17, is to authorize the chairperson to sign the 2019 prisoner housing agreement between Minnehaha County and Clay County. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning. Mike Mattson, Warden of the Jail. I'm before you today for a housing contract with Clay County. That wasn't one of the ones that was originally included in several, several that had been before you previously. They had reached out to us with a housing need and we were able to fulfill that for them. So, we figured we should have a contract.
Any questions for the warden?
Madam Chair, I just am glad we're not housing our guys down there again.
Yeah, and I would note that, you know, when we enter into these contracts, we're not really making money. We aren't doing this for the purposes of making money, but it's not an insubstantial fee that is paid by these counties. For example, this contract is a daily rate of $97.34, which covers all of our costs in connection with running, running the jail and, and taking care of these individuals. Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, on the same line, regionalization, doesn't matter if it's a jail, a wastewater treatment facility, there's a lot of communities that are looking at, at these types of things and don't want to say names, not yet anyway, but, you know, those elected officials and those people in those communities really should look to their elected officials and encourage regionalization and utilization of that way. It saves everybody money. Not everybody needs a jail. Not everybody needs to process wastewater. You know, two opposite ends, two very different things, but very related when it comes to government.
Any other comments, questions? If not, it entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming this morning. That takes us to item 18, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign a resolution and affidavit of possession for closing the real estate property exchange between Minnehaha County and Coin Financial Bank. Maggie Gillespie, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maggie Gillespie, Deputy State's Attorney for Minnehaha County. And I present to you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, an authorization as well as an affidavit of possession. This is a effort to execute not only the affidavit of possession for the closing of the exchange agreement between Coin Financial Bank and the county on the property located out on the east side of town adjacent and, and near Perry Nature area. Before you is a resolution to authorize the chair to execute the standard closing documents for the closing that's scheduled for next Monday. In addition, the title company is requiring a affidavit of possession due to the passage of time and the length of time before which the county took title. Apparently, about 100 years have passed since the, since a previous deed was recorded. And so, the title company, in order to place the county underneath the Statutory Markable Title Act, is requiring that affidavit of possession. And so, those are the two documents that we're asking the board to approve today. In addition, the resolution gives the chair the authority to execute those documents for the closing on Monday.
Any questions? The state's attorney's office?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize you to sign any documents necessary to complete this transaction.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. So, that takes us to item 19, which is consider a motion to approve resolutions for two property tax payment proposals for records 28855 and 073342. Carol Muller?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. You have had several property tax payments that have come before you the last few weeks, maybe about, for about three months they've been going through. And today, you have before you property record 28855 for the amount of $11,995.72. Property record 73342 is for the amount of $15,723.35. Without these property tax payment plans and them continuing to make that, meet that these properties would go on the auction block at the tax deed sale, which we prefer not to do. So, we are excited and glad that that can happen. I appreciate Auditor Litz, who actually does the face-to-face work with the people who want to get back on track with their property taxes.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski?
You're right. We've seen many of these here in recent months. And, you know, 99% or way over 99% of our taxpayers pay their taxes on time, but circumstances are what they are and people sometimes get in a bad spot. So, we're making arrangements because tax deeds are, are messy sales. I mean, they just, they just are. My question is, who's watching that these things occur the way that we're approving it? Is it a monthly statement that you guys have in the auditor's office? How's it, who's policing what we're doing here?
The auditor's office. Thanks for asking that again. We do have spreadsheets on everybody down there and we also provide the people who are approved with a copy of the resolution. We recommend that they come down, make the payments to us. And so, we can get them on the spreadsheet and then we take them over to the auditor, or the treasurer's office and get them properly credited. As you know, we can only accept payments for one year at a time, complete full payments. And so, we put them in the treasurer's office, credit them until we can make that amount and then we pay off the years that are, the ones that would be most pressing and beneficial towards that person.
So, you do pay off the oldest first, not the newest?
Except for the very oldest one. That's the one that, you know, we have the certificate on, so.
Okay.
That's the last one. But yes, we do, we do keep track of this here. And there's a lot of them this year, I would agree.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Again, there's a lot of them this year. And so, and I think this starts in the treasurer's office when they're not collected. And I'm just wondering, so if somebody's property taxes are not collected, do we have to make, I believe it's law, that we have to make the school districts whole? So, if we're short $20,000, which school districts still get their money, that's got to come out of the county coffers in order to make it whole until we, I'm asking.
Well, you know, I'm not exactly sure how that works, but I know if they're short one year, they do get made whole the next year. And where that money comes from, I think is just, it's just assessed on the other taxes that come out.
I'm getting an answer. Sorry, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. I just wanted to clarify that what we apportion to the schools is simply with the dollars that were collected. Any shortfalls would have to be made up by state aid really to make the schools whole.
So, it's still an issue?
It is.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
So, how does somebody get behind $15,000, $16,000? Is that one year's taxes or is that nine years' taxes? No, that is, that, you know, after, after four years is when the tax deed process starts. And some of these actually, we've got some on the books as far back as 2012, 2013, and then 2014 would bring them up to this year. And if you've got a nice property, Mr. Barth, it's not hard to do that. The, the one that you're considering today for the bigger amount of taxes, it was double that. They came in and paid half of it. And then they were five years behind, but they've got a nice property there. They were under the understanding that their bank was making the escrow payments and they were not. And so, they've come forward and made a, like I say, made a substantial payment. They want a payment plan on the rest of that. So, it was more close to $30,000 when that house started out.
Commissioner Benega?
Bob, is it possible to give us a report that shows the number of households and the aging process of where those are at, so we can see what the total looks like and how old they are?
Are you talking about for the tax deed sale as a whole or the ones that have had tax payment plans?
Both.
Both. I plan on bringing forward next week the appraisal report and the recommendations on the properties that are still on the sale. So, we could do that and then I could bring up to date the spreadsheets and let you know where the number of that, number of those are and where they're at.
I think that would be information we should collect.
Right.
Bob, at some point, we publish the names of those that are in arrears on their taxes, right?
On first of the year.
And so, how many, far behind are you when they put my, I mean, someone's name on that list?
Well, it happens every year. You could wind up on there every year, but the tax deed process, you know, where that happens, I'm not so sure we put their name down so much as an R D I D.
So, when we had some confusion a couple of years ago with the tax block issue, a farmer might have their name on there pretty quickly and then their bank sees that and won't loan them money for seed and fertilizer, right?
I think that the, yes, the tax blocks issue came from a different situation.
Yes, it did. But I'm just, they appeared to be behind.
They could and they'd have to explain that and talk to their bankers, so. They could even though they're not, because they sold the parcel that the taxes are due off to somebody else.
I would like to see the list of commercial properties that are behind as well.
Other questions for Auditor Litz?
I'm, I'm just curious if you could help us, remind us, what is the process if I'm behind for a year on my, my property taxes? Do I get some kind of special reminder in the mail? Do I get?
You get your tax notices on a regular basis, just like you always do with the, the amounts of the penalties and interest on there. So, that should alert you to the fact that something's happening with your property. Most people do understand that their property taxes are behind. I've not, I've run across one person and it had to do with interpreter, interpretation, a language issue, a barrier, that really didn't understand that her taxes were behind.
Well, the one you just mentioned where they thought that the bank was paying the escrow taxes, they apparently didn't recognize either that they're behind in their taxes.
They did not. And I don't, there was a gaffe on the addresses where the, the tax, the tax notice was going to the parent's address. And why that got mixed up, I have no idea.
Okay. But you won't get anything special. You really just have to look at the normal information that comes from the county regarding your taxes and pay attention to it to see whether you're in arrears.
That's correct. Just like you normally would.
Okay.
Do you have another clarification?
Yep, got a correction on me here.
Taxpayers do get a delinquency notice annually as well.
Okay.
So, you get a statement of your current taxes due. You also will get a statement if you have delinquent taxes due.
Okay.
In reference to that, it was the interest and penalties that we impose on them that I was referring to, so.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Anything else? Okay, so I would consider a motion to approve the resolution for the two property tax payment proposals.
That's my motion for 28855.
That's my motion for 28855 and 73342.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So, that takes us to item twenty, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign the joint cooperative agreement for temporary consolidation of the mental illness boards with Yankton County. Carol Muller.
Commissioners, just a little over two months ago, the presiding judge of the Second Circuit named Tom Wehrheim and Aaron Johnson to be the co-chairs of the Mental Health Board. Little did they know that we were going to have tornadoes just six weeks later, and which was going to allow them the opportunity to turn on a dime and look at opportunities as to how to accomplish what needs to happen when a Vera behavioral health care is actually closed. I'm going to turn it over to Tom and Aaron and let them explain why this is a very important document, and it's good for Minnehaha County.
Good morning.
Good morning. Tom Wehrheim, co-chair of the Minnehaha and Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness with Aaron Johnson, the other co-chair. Well, with the tornadoes hitting a Vera behavioral health, we've had an issue as to where we can hold our hearings. It's typically where we would have them is onsite at a Vera behavioral health. They have made an agreement with the Human Services Center to run their facility out of portions of the Human Services Center as a separate hospital and a separate entity. However, that creates some problems for us jurisdictionally. We now need to be approved as a joint board temporarily with Yankton County because it's where the individual is located, and when the individual gets moved down to Yankton, now it becomes a Yankton County case. And so, we have made arrangements for us to preside over hearings by ITV here while the individual is down there, and made arrangements with a private attorney to represent the respondents down there. And so, that's what we're looking to do here today, to get approved. One other issue with that is to get our current lay board members approved as well to continue to preside over these hearings. There, and there are eight, correct?
There are eight lay board members that are currently acting. For Minnehaha County, Pam Tiddy, Mary Ellen Hyrigs, Mona Helseth, and Jan Schmuck. For Lincoln County, Janay Poppins, Candace Gierman, Lori Wrenke, and Francie Miller. And we would ask that you approve them as lay board members. They are, we don't have that as part of this joint cooperative agreement, but we would submit a separate agreement probably later today. But we didn't have that included in the joint cooperative agreement, so we would probably, if you can approve them as lay board members, then we would submit that later today.
I'm not sure if we can approve them when it wasn't noticed as part of our agenda today. So, is it, is it something we can do next week?
We can. That would delay our operation as a joint board. Lincoln County approved them today, but if you want to have them on the agenda prior to approval, then we could probably do that next Tuesday if possible.
I'm afraid we might need to do that.
Well, Yankton County's, their commission is meeting Tuesday as well, so we wouldn't be up and running anyway.
That's true.
Because Yankton County has to take a vote as well, and so, that would be next Tuesday on the, that'd be the first, wouldn't it? Correct?
Okay, perfect.
So, we'd be okay there, I think. So, that's what we'll do.
We'll put that on the agenda for next week and get that, if you could get something, you said you were going to try to do that this afternoon anyway, but if you can get something to Carol Muller, our administrative officer, then it will be on our agenda for next week.
Okay, that sounds good. I guess today, then, we would just ask that you approve the joint cooperative agreement for temporary consolidation of mental illness boards.
Okay. Any questions? So, Commissioner Benega.
Tom and Aaron, how many of the people that we were serving at the behavioral health will be able to be percentage-wise, how many of those would be able to be helped in Yankton? Are you going to have fifty percent?
Well, if you're curious as to the number of hearings we have, it's usually very, it's been very little so far. It's been one or two every Tuesday and Friday. You know, it can be as many as five or six if it's a busy day. Percentage overall as to, I guess I'm not quite sure.
That's fine. What I'm really looking for is the number of people that were able to support that we couldn't before because of the tornado.
It's about the same amount. I mean, they physically moved two units, staff and patients, down to.
So, we are getting a hundred percent?
Well, no, because they had some patients up here. So, right now, Unit B is open at a Vera.
Okay.
And so, they've, patients that are appropriate for that particular unit are there, and then they're still operating, I believe it's one unit. It could still be two units down there, but it was basically a hospital within a hospital. They moved everybody down there, including security.
That answers my question.
Sorry. Any other questions or comments?
For approval of the agreement, second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We appreciate both of you coming this morning. We appreciate the role that you're playing. It's a very important, critical role for a really fragile population, and so, we really appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing and for your willingness to take on this position.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item twenty-one, authorize the chairperson to sign the 2020 to 2022 contract between Minnehaha County and Local 2561, Council 65 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Carol Muller.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is the request to authorize the chairperson to sign the 2020-2022 contract between Minnehaha County and Local 2561, Council 65 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, or ASME, as we often go through and refer to that as. I detailed out just a few changes for you that's out there. It's very similar to what we've had in the past with some changes and clarification that we've had. The pay matrix will be adjusted by three percent for 2020, two percent for 2021, and one point five percent for 2022. Or, if the pay matrix for the general population of employees is higher, you would match that for the union also. And that is a historical process that the county has gone through for many, many years. So, before you today is the opportunity to approve this three-year contract, which will begin for the year 2020.
Commissioner Karski.
Good work on this. I know you and Carrie, and worked hard, and it just doesn't show up that before us as a piece of paper to get approved. A lot goes on before that happens, and both from the employees and from our HR. You know, when you look at what's going on here, we talk about basically, lack of a better way to say it, but realigning and making our highway department better and giving more opportunities for people. So, thank you for the work you put into this.
Other questions or comments for Carol? If not, it entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve this contract between Minnehaha County and Local 2561.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-two is along the same lines. I'll let you explain, Carol.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, the highway union, as part of this process, as we were wrapping up, they requested that the county have informal discussions in 2020 on the county's pay matrix. And we have a long history of if a union wants to meet, we certainly go through and do that. They asked to have that put into a resolution. There's nothing that will change because of this conversation. There's, we are not obligating the county to any changes because of those discussions that are out there. But it'll be a good opportunity for all of us to dig a little deeper.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to allow you to sign that memorandum, and I would make a comment.
So, a motion and a second and a comment. Commissioner Barth.
You know, we have treated them with respect and certainly good faith, and I believe they appreciate that, and I expect that we will continue to do that.
Any other comments? And I agree with that. I view this memorandum of understanding as just an opportunity for us, both sides, to educate each other on how the process works and where they're coming from. And I appreciate, once again, as Commissioner Karski said, all the work that went into getting these two documents done. It's been a long process, and I'm very excited that we have a three-year contract that will take us through the next few years. So, with that, we had a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? Noted, entertain, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item twenty-three, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth.
Sorry. I was at the East Dakota Water Development District meeting where they approved their annual budget, and, you know, water's been a huge issue, obviously, for all of eastern South Dakota, and we approved money to go to Madison to study how to prevent future flooding, and they did a study in ninety-two and decided that they weren't going to spend the million and a half bucks to build a small dam upstream, and this study will show that they need to build a small dam upstream. We'll see if they then fund it, as they should have. The planning department, we had our monthly planning and zoning meeting last night. We approved a new KFO. We actually had approved it previously, but it was never built, and so it had expired, and they came back to us and are now building a slightly larger one. That was approved. We also approved an expansion of Walt Bones's dairy down south there by Turner County, and we're expanding the Sweetman's gravel pit north of Corson. Anyway, that was last night.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Benega.
I would just like to say a thanks to both the employees of the Fair Grounds and JDC for all the extra work they put in last week when we had the tornado. They made quick work of not big problems, but frankly, no interruption of service, and the staff did an awesome job, so.
There are certainly a lot of stories from that time period. A lot of people who pitched in, a lot of quick decision-making, just even as evidenced with the Vera Behavioral Health, they were able to evacuate their facility that was affected by the tornado and get folks where they needed to be, where they could get good services in very short order. I know the JDC had some challenges with power the night of the tornado, and were able to keep all of their guests safe and comfortable. So, we do really appreciate the folks, you know, and the countless, countless hours of people removing trees and repairing damages. If there's a bright side to those kinds of natural disasters, it's the way people pull together and get things done around here. So, Commissioner Karski.
My liaison report of sorts, I guess, regarding the highway department. Baltic has been really struggling with access in and out. In fact, the only access out was a township road that, you know, meant the handle of maybe a hundred cars a day, was handling thousands of vehicles a day, and it did lead to challenges. Unfortunately, we have the bridge under construction, which really couldn't use the road, obviously, and we didn't plan to build a bridge or rebuild a bridge in a wet year. When we start the process years ago with planning for it and then bidding for it late last year, early this year, it just, it happens, and I appreciate people's patience. But just a shout-out to the highway department. They really worked with, and the township supervisor, they worked really hard and tried to respond as quickly as they could to getting the road in drivable condition, daily maintenance on it. We don't, our highway department doesn't work a lot with gravel roads, so it was new experience with them. They had to work with the state LTAP agency, local transportation program, to figure out what's the best way to do that. Right after the storms, it's been a few weeks, but we haven't met since then. I know DJ Boothy on Thursday night especially, probably got two hours of sleep that whole night because he, him and his team were out putting roadblocks up and trying to find roadblocks and et cetera, trying to keep people safe. So, you know, with the construction, it makes it difficult. We appreciate people's patience, but just a shout-out to the highway department for the work and keeping people safe and making it happen.
It was amazing they could find roadblock signs because it seemed like there were more closed roads than open roads for a while. So, I also appreciate you giving them a shout-out because I know they were burning the candle on both ends, so, and keeping us safe. And, you know, once again, it's amazing to me that people will drive around road barriers, but it happens every time, and doing so does not only put yourself at danger, but it puts others at danger that then have to come in and try to get you out of a jam. So, you know, please, please, next spring, remember not to do that. So, I know some of us driving to Pier last week had to drive through water that was over the road on the interstate, and that freaked me out. So, I don't know how people drive around barriers and go into rushing waters. So, anyway, any other liaison reports?
I would just note that the jail, we have kind of a facilities planning group that meets every, twice a month, and we met last week, and I'm just really pleased to report that that project has no drama involved in it at all. It's, we're on task, on target, both as far as the construction timeline and under budget. So, it's been a great group of people to work with, and so, we can end on a bright note. All right. If there are no other liaison reports, then it's new business. Is there any new business today?
Hearing none. Is there any old business? Okay, if there's no old business, then I would entertain a motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will recess for about ten minutes, give everyone a little bit of a break, and we will come back at twenty-five minutes to eleven. Thank you. Thanks for coming, everyone.